It looks like at 6:30. So, I'll introduce the members. James Channing on my right, Dan Botkin, Francis Dean, Charles Gray, Mark Begley, Bill, and Ryan Hill are our board secretaries.
No, we're not secretaries.
Our assistants, administrative assistants, our principal planning directors.
Planning, development director.
Creative assistant.
Yeah, I'm an administrative assistant.
So, the way we'll do it today is we're going to, first thing we'll do is just approve the minutes. Does anybody have any changes or things from the minutes?
No.
The motion to accept the minutes as reported.
Motion to accept.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, the next thing in the public hearings, I'll just sort of set the rules. The way we'll do it tonight is you'll address the board, not each other. We'll give the proponents of the variance applications a period of time to present their petition, a time for anybody who's supportive of the petition of the petitioner to speak, a time for anybody to speak in opposition to any of the proposals, and a time for the proponent to rebut any of the new things that come out. That'll be the hearing. Please state your name and address for the record before you speak, and hopefully we'll be able to make a decision tonight. If not, we'll take it under consideration and decide at the next public meeting if we don't think we have enough information, don't think we're in a position to vote. So, the first item, if we want to read the minutes, the clerk would please read the minute for the publication, for the...
So, the Islam Meadow Zoning Board of Appeals holds a public hearing on March 9, 2020, at 6:30 PM in the Islam Meadow Public Library, 60 Center Square, Islam Meadow, to consider case zoning ZV 2020-1, a request by the applicant for variance under Islam Meadow zoning by a law table 3-1. Islam Meadow schedule of use regulations 3.2 dimensional and density regulations to reduce the minimum frontage requirement from 175 feet to zero feet located at Zero, Rear Peas Road, in the Residence AA zoning district. Applicant's attorney, James Martin Robinson Donovan, PC, 1500 Main Street in Springfield. Information regarding the application is on file for inspection in the Planning, Community and Development Office, located in the Town Hall at 60 Center Square for review by the Public turning business hours. And this was published in 220 and 227, 2020.
Okay. Is anybody here for the petitioner who wants to speak?
Good evening, everyone. I am Jim Martin. I'm attorney at Robinson Donovan in Springfield, and I represent the petitioner and landowner with respect to this matter. I was going to say that this is not your usual variance, but then I realized, no variance is usual. Everything is unique, but this is a little bit more intertwined and complex than most variance applications. So, if you indulge me a few minutes, I'll give you a little background of how we got here today. My client acquired this property from the Bilton family, and at the same time that they acquired the subject parcel, they acquired the adjoining parcel in Summers, Connecticut. We provided maps and plans. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at it, but probably most people are familiar with the property anyway. And when they acquired it, their intention was to develop a solar array, both the Summers parcel and the Bilton parcel. They determined that the property was zone residential, so they undertook to get a zone change for this parcel. We filed a petition with the town council, who had a hearing, and referred it to the planning board. So, they could have denied it right there, but they referred it to the planning board. We have it before the planning board, and that was a short conversation. The planning board was voted 5-0 not to recommend a zone change. Nonetheless, that's not fatal, as you probably know from the law. So, we pursued it, then the town council referred it to its subcommittee to address zone changes. Marilyn and Ralph, Ralph at that time, I don't think either of them were actually public officials elected to public. You weren't on the council then, were you? Neither was Ralph, but they were on the board. Don Anderson was the chair. They held a hearing on that. There was a long delay in getting the minutes, and during that period, my client grew frustrated with, you know, the message that he was getting from the town about being able to build solar. So, a law action was commenced in the land court, and that was litigated in the land court. The town was represented by Kevin Maynard at Berkeley Richardson, and Chief Judge Piper drew the case and issued a decision on cross motions for summary judgment. If you're not familiar with that, rather than going through a whole trial, you can say, based on these facts, if you accept these facts, and this is our law, this is our argument, and the other side said the same thing. So, the cross motions for summary judgment. And in its simplest form, Judge Piper granted my client's motion for summary judgment, determining that the Islam Meadow zoning by law was violated Massachusetts statutes, and that it was an unreasonable restriction to restrict solar arrays, ground mounted solar arrays, in residential districts. If anybody needs a copy of this order, I have it. I'm happy to provide it to you. Mark, do you know if everybody's seen it or had it?
I have, and I know it was circulated. I don't know if people have read it.
I have extra copies. I don't want to burden you with additional paper if anybody wants it, but I have extra copies. Pardon me?
I have a copy.
Okay. So, as you may recall, at the end of the order, he said that the prevailing party could go back with the town and decide to proceed to site plan review with the planning board if it wished. Council for the, for my client and council for the town worked out an arrangement where we went back to the town and we started the site plan review process. And we slowly but methodically worked our way through that. And from my personal perspective and my client's perspective, it was very slow. We sometimes come to a meeting, my client would come every time from Minnesota, and we wouldn't have a report from the Department of Public Works, so we'd have to continue. We wouldn't have a report from the fire chief. We'd have to continue it. But ultimately, all the paperwork was in, and at the final hearing, what we were waiting for was one final comment for the DPW. We agreed to continue it to another hearing. During that period of time, we received a report from the DPW that he had no problem with the client as designed. I do want to also interject. In the interim, we went to Conservation Commission to get a determination that there was no issue with the wetlands. The hearing was scheduled a month ago in February for 6 o'clock, I believe, yeah, 6 o'clock at the high school. At 5:05, I received a phone call from Mr. Maynard that he was no longer counsel for the town, and the council hired, hired new counsel, and he asked me if I saw a memorandum that had been submitted to the town, which I had not. We got to the town, and I said I had not heard of it. Of course, my client came in from Minnesota, and, you know, there was an apology that, you know, oh geez, we should have gotten this to you. But at that point, you know, we were asked to rebut a 38-page memorandum we hadn't seen, which we couldn't do. During the discussion, and Attorney Pill's presentation, he focused on the fact that the planning board was not authorized to grant a waiver or variance from a frontage requirement. That's important because the frontage issue is both addressed, in our opinion, in Judge Piper's decision, and was specifically addressed between council for the town and me. Because I believe, give credit where credit was due, that early on in one of the public hearings, Mr. Page said, this is a landlocked parcel. How are you going to, how are you going to meet your frontage requirement? So, that generated the discussion. And at that point, I received, after exchange of legal academic analysis, Mr. Maynard, town council, informed me that he had, oh, and Mr., excuse me, the chairman asked to refer this to town council, to him. We discussed it. He came back and said, the requirements of frontage have been satisfied. He told me he was going to tell that to Mr. Denver, and at the next meeting, Mr. Denver acknowledged that the issue of, the frontage issue had been satisfied. It was no longer an issue, and we could proceed. That was maybe late summer, early fall. Now, in February, you know, at 6:05, we get, 5:05, we get this issue raised. Had we had an opportunity at some point, or however long it took for the town to obtain new counsel, get this 38-page memo done, we could have addressed what we are going to be addressing now. We're actually back on the planning board agenda for tomorrow night. So, as a result, at the discussion, is one of the things that Mr. Pill said, well, you can go to the, you can go to the ZBA and get a variance, but the planning board can't do it. So, the planning board kindly continued the hearing, wanting to give us an opportunity to look at all this new information, and two, to come before the ZBA. So, that's a little bit of a long sorted background on how we get here today. I say this is a little bit unique because part of our analysis is, you know, a variance, is it needed? But some people in the town apparently think that a variance is needed. My client's got almost two years into this project. We're asking for a variance. It might be out of an abundance of caution, and I'll tell you what the issues are that give us a variance, but I'll also tell you why we think that the frontage issue is really a non-issue. First of all, the title that we were able to obtain from this goes back to 1905. This parcel and its varied dimensions has been in the same shape since 1905, and maybe longer, I don't know, but we could only get back to 1905. The built-in or family, built-in family ownness for that entire period was transferred from some generations to the next generations my client bought. It was apparently used primarily for agricultural and, you know, dairy, and for pleasure, entertainment, picnicking and hiking and that sort of stuff. And the frontage has always been on Bilton Road in Summers, Connecticut. If everyone's familiar with the parcel, it's totally landlocked, and it has been for 100 years or more. And, and so, it shows on the town assessor's records as this parcel, and they've either questioned or challenged it. It was at various times taxed, and then in 61, and not taxed, and things like that. So, there's been, they've been looking at this parcel and its current configuration for a century or more, and access, as I said, was always through Summers Road. The land court determined that the restraints of what conditions the town imposed on, such as, you know, density, you know, coverage ratios and that sort of things were unreasonable when you come to a solar farm. You couldn't restrict it to 25% coverage and other things. And it would stand to reason that frontage would be an unreasonable restriction on a solar farm for the very fact that there is access on Bilton Road. It's an unreasonable restriction on solar. It has no other frontage or access to it. Again, and Judge Piper's decision, bear with me one second, I don't have here. Judge Piper found that no zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate zoning in Massachusetts. Now, I, as a, I have to acknowledge that this is a decision on motion for summary judgment. It's not a final judgment, but in accordance with the agreement between the town council and the client, it has, then we went back to the town to do this. The decision also says that, that the town and my client should work together to bring this back to the planning board or to implement a different zoning bylaw that meets his requirements. And, and so, here we are. We went, we went back, we marched our way through, and we, you know, basically got ambushed a month ago on this issue for frontage. The town council had reported that the issue of frontage was satisfied. I did not ask him to elaborate on that, but his analysis was that it had been satisfied. It can be satisfied either through the Bilton Road property or by the fact that this is a pre-existing, non-conforming use. The subdivision control laws, I think, Mark probably knows better than me, but were probably started, got adopted in the 40s or so, and it took towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts up to the 70s to adopt them, and I think we both agree, there may be one town that never adopted the subdivision control law. But Islam Meadow adopted its zoning subdivision control law in 61, maybe 62, I haven't read that, 62, excuse me, 62. So, in terms of whether or not the town can even impose this frontage on it, on this lot, after it has been existent since at least 1905, is the first question. And, and if someone thinks it can, then a variance should be granted. If someone thinks that the frontage isn't satisfied on the Bilton, by having Bilton Road access, which it's had for over 100 years, then a variance would be in order. A couple of questions that I thought you might be interested in. The parcel in Summers, the other 60% of the parcel, the, yeah, a solar farm's going there. So, there isn't an issue of like, well, what happens if you get, you can't get solar there, and then you're looking to go through Summers, you know, property to get to property in Islam Meadow with a different use? The classic example you hear at seminars is, I got this kind of lot that's zoned here that doesn't allow what's allowed here, but I want to have an access road through that lot. But here, Summers is, allows us. I have multiple copies, to put it to the record if you'd like, of the, what's that?
I would like that.
Okay. So, these are the, these are the decisions of the siting authorities.
Exhibit 1 and 2.
Of the state, of the town of Summers, Connecticut. So, if you want copies for everyone, I have them, but just let me know.
So, one is dated November 9, 2018.
And then the other one is dated...
January 22, 2018.
Correct.
Okay. I haven't read them, obviously, with the reading, but I assume that this basically says that the state of Connecticut, siting councils approve a solar farm on the Connecticut portion of this land.
Correct. And exhibit number three should, should be then the building permit that was issued following the approvals. And in fact, construction is going on down in Summers as we speak. So, there isn't an issue with the use of the Summers property. The second issue is that during the discussions between Islam Meadow Town Council and my client, a concern was raised as to, well, you know, we want to make sure that the two parcels are always married. And so, there was a first discussion about an easement. Well, you'll probably, if you've read Mr. Pill's analysis, he goes off on a tangent, editorially, as he often does, about this easement. You can't grant an easement to yourself. But what he missed was the fact that the property and the developer would be two different entities. So, there's going to be an easement that would cross both properties and would be, it would be legally effective. But if that wasn't going to be satisfactory, town, and I was concerned about that, council for town and I worked out that we would put a deed restriction on both properties, that they had to be owned together and operated together, and that was presented to the town, the planning board, and that was acceptable to the town to have a deed restriction. We had one drafted, actually. We haven't obviously done it yet because we don't have the permits. So, we have both the building permit and the siting and approvals, and we have, had agreed on a deed restriction for access to the property.
But the entity, are there going to be separate entities that one is going to own the property, and there's a separate entity that's going to operate the solar facility?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have the name of that facility, the operating entity?
It's, well, the applicant that owns the property now is PLH.
Yeah.
They'll create an entity to...
A separate entity.
Separate entity to operate it when they get their permits and get going. So, in terms of the underlying issue of meeting the zoning requirement statute for a variance in your bylaws, first of all, your bylaws state that the bylaws are intended to promote the health, welfare, and safety of the community. Part of this is Judge Piper's findings as well. We strongly believe that alternative energy such as solar promotes the health, welfare, and safety of this community by remusing fossil fuel generation. The electricity that will be generated at this site will go right into the grid right here in Islam Meadow. This is not going somewhere else. If you're familiar with the site, you know, you...
How is that possible?
Pardon me?
Well, all solar, all solar fields work that way. They're all, they're all usually tied into the local... There's a, there's a main power line, right here.
If you're familiar, I was about to say, familiar with the site, you know, you have, it's not called Zero South Peas Road for nothing, because you can't get there from Peas Road, but it's behind the farm, it's behind the Eversource, which has a main transmission line that runs through it, and we're in negotiations to tie in to Eversource. And so, that will then go into the grid, which will go to, national grid, which will go to...
That doesn't help Islam Meadow, because we're not, we're not Eversource.
No, but it goes...
I'm not trying to get out of here.
No, no. What I just said, I don't know if you heard me, which is going to go to national grid.
They're all combined.
And then service Islam Meadow.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, in terms of, you know, the determination as to, is this good for the community consistent with the bylaws, we strongly believe that it is. With respect to the, excuse me for one second here. With respect to the standards we have set forth, and it's spelled out in our addendum to our attachment, that we think we meet the standards of an easement. Before I do that, though, I know another question arose as to whether or not, because this access would be through Islam Meadow, whether or not there'd be any concerns on the town of Summers, excuse me, Summers, any concerns by the town of Islam Meadow. All the administrative reviews were ultimately done and were satisfied. I have here an email from Chief Morissette, which I'll put into the record, and which he writes to my contact at the company. Hi, Steve, driving a short distance into Connecticut to access the site is not a concern of this department. I have also been in touch with the Summers Fire Department Chief. We both agree that any incident at the site would initially be a dual agency response. The lead agency would be termed by the exact location of the incident. We have in our plans, you know, having all the alarms and all the tie-ins to both departments if that would be the case, so...
Is there an intermunicipal agreement between Summers, you know, access through Summers to, is that in place?
It's not in place, Mark, but based on the chief's memo, if that's required, we agreed we would provide it.
Okay.
So, I think that addresses that issue. And with respect to, that's not mine. Let me grab one more sub-file here. As you can see, we generate a fair amount of work here. So, the property, as I've said many times, is a landlocked parcel. That was the subject of litigation in the land court. We have submitted a complete site plan review application to the planning board. We've been told that the frontage issue had been satisfied, a little enforcement, a literal enforcement of frontage, if it's applicable, because this is not a residential subdivision issue. This is a 20-acre, approximately 20-acre landmass that I don't believe would be governed by the subdivision rules. And so, if, but if, if, as Mr. Pill suggested, he needed frontage, but that it had to be waived, then it would create a substantial hardship. That parcel could never be developed by anyone, whether it's to put a supermarket, a factory, a 7-Eleven, or a gas station, or a residential subdivision. You couldn't put a residential subdivision there because you couldn't get access. Now, particularly since now my client owns the Summers property, which is the only property that allows access through Bolton Road. There are some plans you'll see, and as we went through the approval process, some changes were made to accommodate comments from the municipal departments, so that when Summers' plan was approved, you know, the turnaround went up to the Summers line, but now our plan shows through. It was a result of talking to the fire department, that the latest plans were filed that are under review by the planning board, as a turnaround wide enough to get his equipment in there and come in and out, so we addressed those. But the hardship would be that this parcel is not able to be used for anything. If you require, if you require a frontage, then it certainly can't be used for anything. And the zoning bylaw restricted it to industrial and industrial garden, and the planning board suggested that since one of those subdivision, one of those sections required frontage, it could only be the other one. This is before the planning board determined, I mean, the land court determined that this was an illegal restriction. So, we think that that is a substantial hardship. The current configuration is a legal lot, and the variance can be granted without detriment to the public good. First of all, the public good will be served by generating alternative energy. The parcels around it, the main transmission lines are the neighbors to the, I guess that would be the north, and then it cuts over to the east, and it would contribute alternative energy into the system, and it would allow the property to be productive. It would allow the property to be, you know, beneficial to the town. You know, there's the topography, configuration of lot, those standards, but here, the configuration is a configuration, and as a result of it, you can't get to it. So, having been that way for that long, we believe meets the prong test of a variance. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and...
Well, I think the, I just take, just to point out, I mean, the parcel does have frontage. The problem is the frontage is in Summers, Connecticut, not in Islam Meadow.
Correct. I should have said in Islam Meadow. I should have said in Islam Meadow.
There is frontage on the parcel on Bilton Road.
And that's what town council originally said, was part of the reason that he said the frontage was satisfied.
Yeah, and I understand that was his opinion. Mr. Pill disagrees, but there's frontage on Bilton Road. It is one parcel. It just happened to be in two states.
Correct. No, it's, it's two legally defined parcels, but it's being treated as one parcel. Because of the state boundary, you can't have...
You record it in two different deeds, because you can't record the deed in Massachusetts and Connecticut. Yeah, but it's, it's got to be recorded.
It would be something that I talk about.
Yeah, but it's, it's got to be recorded in two different locations, and the mass property is recorded in mass, and the Connecticut property is recorded in Connecticut, but...
If you look at the deeds, they're from the exact same people, to the exact same person.
They were just done at the same time.
Right.
It's the matter of recording, so this is sort of a unique situation, because we're, we're dealing not only with different towns, but we're dealing with different states and different requirements of both state and, and local laws. Because sometimes you have a situation where you, you have a subdivision, and your access to your subdivision is through another town. But that's in Massachusetts, and there's the frontage in, in another town sufficient for the frontier. But this isn't a subdivision. This is just a proposed development on a vacant piece of land, so I'm not so sure. It's a subdivision, it's a proposed use, not a subdivision of the land, so to speak.
Correct.
So, but I would be interested in having, you know, an intermunicipal agreement with regard to that. I would also be interested in making sure that the state of Connecticut is okay with the extension of the access road into Massachusetts.
They are.
Well, I don't know. I just would want some indication that they, that if we were going to go with this, that they would be okay with the extension of it into Massachusetts, and then I just want to make sure that the road as designed is acceptable, you know, for the police, fire, and ambulance in terms of access to this site if something happened up in that area.
Well, I brought you the fire department. I didn't bring you the police chief, but I can get you the police chief. They've reviewed these plans. No one had any issue with the plans.
So, I just want to make sure they're okay with it for their vehicles, that they can get safely up into that area if they need that.
We changed the design to meet some of the comments of the fire. By the way, I trust you folks all know, I mean, this, after this is built, there's one truck that visits, visits the solar array once a month to check on it, mow the lawn, weed whack, and so this is a very, very low usage of this access road.
And what's the nearest measurement to any residence or, or other type of use? And what's the nearest, uh, measurement to any residence or, or other type of use other than vacant land or farming? In terms of this, which, do you have any measurements on that? In terms of like from these homes in Summers, and I'm.
I don't have any from Summers, Mark, but, um.
How about, East Long Meadow, looks like these would be the closest.
Those are the closest down there. I think that's Capri Drive there.
And what's that distance? I mean, this is tough to tell on.
I, I think, I, I, don't hold me to this. I wanna say three to four hundred feet. I can't remember for sure. There, there will be a tree buffer in between. And there was a presentation of the planning board about the height, so that you would not see this because of the change in elevations.
Yeah, looks like this goes up to the three sixty is the height point. And then it drops going back down this way, and drops this way. So the height is like right in the top here. And the tree elevations block that. Any other questions or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm having trouble with the theory for the variance. The, the way I look at this, uh, is you're here seeking relief as the aggrieved under the zoning bylaw. Zoning bylaw has a frontage requirement. Uh, the, the issue of whether the, the use benefits the town, the issue of truck travel, the, all those issues, uh, to me are kind of moot here. Speaking for myself, it's a simple matter of what, is what the applicant asks for something this board can properly grant? And I'm, I'm asking the question really of you, Mark, because I don't know, I'm not real used to how you guys operate here. But where I come, where I came from, a variance had to meet a test. It had to be, had to be hardship, and it had to be based on topography or soils.
Or shape.
Or shape. Uh, frontage was never, never a consideration, as far as I know. And so, uh, the way I approach this is the, the consideration of whether the use is good for the environment, or good for the town, or whether it's this far from a residence, or whether the Summers is granted approval. Those things don't, those things are important, but they're not for us to talk about, I don't think. I think what we, what I'd like to understand is, how do we get to where Attorney Martin would like us to go?
Well, I think one of the issues you have is the whole issue of frontage. Um, the, the issue is can we vary the frontage requirement where your frontage is in another town and is not in East Long Meadow? And it actually does provide access, but what's the purpose of frontage of a, of a lot? And the whole purpose of frontage is so that you can get to the lot safely with emergency vehicles, and people who are gonna use the site can get there, so.
But what about, just, to abbreviate what you just said, frontage, does this board have the ability to waive frontage requirements?
Yes.
It does? Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to understand. It does. So we can, we could theoretically.
Correct.
In, with a case, in a, in a, with a, with a piece of property in our town that does not have any frontage in our town, we could say.
You have adequate frontage in, in another town, or, or, in this case, a town and state, um, that meets that requirement.
And that wouldn't be a variance, though, right? That would be an exception.
Well, it's a variance because it, I think our zoning bylaw talks about frontage in the town, and that's the difference, is we're, we're allowing the frontage in another town. And that's why I'm very interested in having an intermunicipal agreement in place to make sure that that frontage, in fact, is not illusory, that it's real, that if there's, somebody has a heart attack back here, a worker gets hurt back here, or kids are playing back there, I mean, it's gonna be hard, because these, the federal regulations, those things are fenced in, and.
They're all fenced in.
They're pretty dangerous, because they don't want them around.
So, but, but I just wanna be clear, this kind of relief can be granted apart from a variance, right? This, this can be something other than a variance, because.
Right.
From what I understand, you can't grant a variance based on what he said.
Well, I think part of the, like, I had some disagreement with what town council talks about, because he was talking about a situation where you had a lot that just didn't have enough frontage. Here you have a lot that has enough frontage under our bylaw. The problem is the frontage is in another town. This meets, if this was all in East Long Meadow, we wouldn't be here today.
I understand that. But how does frontage in another town equate to frontage in our town?
Well, that, and that's what I, that's what I'm trying to, to, to argue, but my, you know, my, the way I'm looking at it, it's the, the frontage, what's the purpose of the frontage requirements in our town?
The concern, the overall concern I'm raising is that, um, we have to be very careful if we're going to allow things like this to take place. And, and I'm not expressing the opinion of whether or not it should take place, because it's, it's not our job, as far as I'm concerned. But the solar industry is huge, and this guy's got, I don't know how many competitors that are crawling all over the place looking to do this. And so we need to understand what, you know, what we're willing to do here.
And, and it's, and I think this is a unique situation. You're dealing with a parcel of land whose frontage is in another town and in another state, um, which isn't that usual. Um, and there is only one access. And now whether or not they could access through the right-of-way that goes all the way out to Shaker Road, I don't know. That would be between the utility company and, and them. It's a long, long way in, but that would be the other way in if, if they, you know, had a second access, that's all.
Basically, those are my concerns. I mean, I always come to these things predisposed to grant any, anybody what they want. That's the attitude I think every zoning board member should come to a meeting, trying to help the person looking for, but you gotta make sure you can.
Right.
That's all.
No, no, and I understand, and I, but that's, that's my reading in terms of the, the frontage here. I mean, so Pill was citing ones where you had inadequate frontage on a lot, and you're trying to grant somebody making it, making it a building lot when the zoning, you know, where's your hardship when the lot already? But this lot has the frontage that we require, except it's in another town.
And our bylaw doesn't speak to that eventuality.
It doesn't speak to that eventuality at all. Most bylaws don't, and.
But it's not uncommon. I mean.
No, and I've done, and I've done, and I've done, where I've headed, we, between Springfield and Chickaby, Springfield, East Long Meadow. We've done that in Springfield and East Long Meadow, your access roads, before they were made public ways, all those streets off of the White Road. They put houses in East Long Meadow. You can't get there except through the White Road.
Springfield, right.
Uh, and you had to come through. You had to have an intercreditor agreement. We've allowed lots to be built off of those, off of those streets that were existence. I mean, uh, if you go up on the left side, if you're going out toward Ranconia Golf Course.
Right.
All those streets, um, your only access is through Springfield.
Just like this, this parcel is landlocked in East Long Meadow, but it's not landlocked in Summers.
Right.
That's right. It's the same exact situation.
Situation. So that, that, that's the concern that, that I have in, in terms of, I think, you know, it's, it's not like this frontage you have in Summers wouldn't meet the requirement. It does meet the requirement, it's just the problem is it's not in East Long Meadow. Um, and that's, that's where I think he's claiming he has a hardship. This is a unique situation. I've got a uniquely shaped lot, uh, that, you know, calls for a variance, because it does have the frontage, but it's not in your town.
It would've been easier for us if the judge had included frontage in the decision.
Well, we read the judge's decision as saying that frontage is not an issue, because. He says, he says it's an unreasonable, and it was reported back to the judge, as per his order, that the frontage issue had been addressed, because he asked whether or not that needed to be done. And council for the town at that time, and council for my client, reported that they had resolved that issue. Because when you read his, he talks about the other, the other dimensional zoning requirement was, you know, coverage issue. And he says that's unreasonable. Go back and work it out. Um, so.
Whether it even needs a variance from us is another issue.
I, I, I acknowledge that, I acknowledge that.
Does it really even need?
But the planning board, based on Mr. Pill's letter, it recommended we, well, not recommend, but left us a decision that we had to come here for this. Otherwise, we're gonna.
I actually agree, I mean, I agree that, but I'm not, just not familiar with the town's laws. And yet, I gotta work on that. But do, do you guys have an exemption that you grant?
There's, there's, well, that's the issue that we have. That's what we're, it has to, it's basically saying there's a hardship, and, and the frontage in another town is sufficient for us, if it has all these other. In my opinion, if it meets all of these requirements, because you gotta look at what was the purpose of frontage.
No, no, I, I understand.
Summers has already approved it, so. But I, I agree, the variance makes me queasy.
Yeah.
Okay, variances in this state are pretty, you know, pretty understood as to what, what they have to be. And I know plenty of attorneys, I've hired many of them, to make arguments similar to the one that you're making tonight on my behalf. So I get that. But I, I would feel more comfortable if there was a way, I mean, if the board is predisposed to vote this way, but if there was a way to grant this without a variance. Because I'm not.
Well, the planning board, I think, thought they could until they got the second.
Planning board was instructed that they could not deal with this frontage.
Because they can't even understand.
So it's, if you are waiving the frontage in East Long Meadow, that's a variance or East Long Meadow's literal requirement by finding that there is adequate var, uh, frontage in Summers.
That would be, to me, make more sense, provided that's legally defensible. I don't know if it is.
Yes, well, it may or may not be. I mean, I think it probably is. I think, as I said, I.
I think it's more defensible than a variance. My concern is that if you do, if we do this on a variance, you have a lot more trouble with future variances.
Well, Dan, let, let me make it clear. A waiver of the frontage is a variance.
It's a variance.
It's still a variance.
It's still a variance.
These circumstances, I, I've never seen in my time on the board.
No.
Unique circumstances like this with a landlocked parcel, with a, with an adjoining lot in another state. I mean, this is.
This is new.
This is very new to me.
Me too.
I think this is new to everyone.
And, and, and I don't particularly care what the use is, as I'm looking at this. I, I, I'm going through that, that, as you, you're closing, laid it out perfectly, right? You've got, you've got, is there a substantial hardship? Well, yeah, right? Is there, is there something unique about the topography? Well, yeah, it's landlocked. The, the third part that, and, and this is where I think, Mark, you're, you're going with this intertown agreement, is the purpose of the zoning ordinance is, is not the health, safety, well-being. I, I don't care whether you're putting solar on there, whether you're putting unicorns on there, it doesn't matter. The purpose, in my mind, is that you can get fire trucks in, ambulances, police. That's, that's the purpose, in my mind, of the frontage, right? So the, the, the memo from our police chief is, is pretty persuasive. I'd like to see a, a similar memo with the, the, the police chief.
No, the fire, yeah, you're.
We have, we have the person, right? We got the fire. I'd like to see a similar on the police, and then, and then an agreement between the two municipalities, and I think that's.
That's important.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure I have, I mean, you can make that a condition. I'm pretty sure I have that. I just didn't bring it, because.
That's fine.
I brought the.
And I, I would feel more comfortable, frankly, with an easement, um, than a restrictions. Restrictions last for thirty years, and are gone after thirty years, so.
We started with it, but, you know, now your town council's doing this.
And I understand, but, but I'm not sure he was aware that there were two different identities.
The, the first issue I didn't necessarily understand, where there was a requirement that the owner and the operator or the tenant is an tenant.
Well, you can have an easement over your.
No, I understand.
You don't need an easement.
Right, exactly.
Right, but a lot of times you give a lease.
There's nothing to prevent the owner and the tenant from changing, if you don't.
For no dollar, or land. No, but it can be a breasman that runs with the land. You can make it permanent. But, but what Mr. Pill's got off on was that, thinking that the owner and the developer were one in the, gonna be one in the same. So he says, it's preposterous. You can't give yourself an easement. Well, we all know that. But when it's two different parties, so, uh, the option was then to put a deed restriction. Either, my client's fine with either one.
Yeah.
And we had agreed to work that out with the county. So that's not really an issue for the.
Is he gonna lease the, the land to this entity as?
Probably, yeah, he gets, it's a one company with division.
Well, we just would want a copy of the lease, that's all, in the file.
And we would, you know, we would give that to the planning board, too, because, you know, there's gonna be pre-construction meetings and all the requirements of a planning board, assuming that the planning board approves the site design review. But we, we, this is, you know, this is, we're literally, you know, stuck in a, in the middle here of a unique situation.
Well, presumably your due diligence, you perfectly understood what the situation was for your client bought this property.
My client knew that this property was zoned residential, when it bought it.
Did he know he had no frontage in the state? Had he wanted to put this field in?
He, he, he's, he's a very successful, smart person. He had read the law, had read the cases, and he believed the frontage on Bolton Road was adequate for East Long Meadow.
He believed it?
He believed it, and it.
Based on his reading of the bylaw?
And the case law, and the Massachusetts statute, and the zoning bylaws here. So he believed that it was adequate. And I, I think most everyone did until a month ago, maybe except for Ralph when he brought it up. But your county council said it was satisfied. Frontage was satisfied. That's an open public carry from the planning board and town council. So they believed it was, town council, and I've spoken to him to confirm that. So, yes, he didn't just, you know, fail to.
I'll buy and I'll go fight the battle.
Or failed to even notice, oh, what did I do? Yeah, I bought a landlocked parcel I can't get to. It wasn't landlocked. It was adjacent, and the Bultons had traveled in and out of that property for, since nineteen oh five, using that property. And no one objected to it then.
And you're saying they can, there's no other development that can occur around there for housing, residential, anything else?
Once this solar array gets built, I mean, I can't say thirty, forty years from now, you know, what would happen. But for the time that this solar, there's gonna be, uh, an easement and a requirement of common ownership. That's what the town asked for.
Because you're looking at, you know, like, less than a thousand feet from the development behind it. Who's to say they can't expand beyond that?
In East Long Meadow.
They can't have that, let that end road.
Can you see that?
In East Long Meadow, I'm right.
Yeah, this is the area.
The power company has all the land to the north of us. And then a private owner has all the land to the north of that. So there's no way we could expand anywhere. The power company is not giving up.
They have to cross that easement to get there. That easement intersects in between. If you look at the map there, you'll see the, that, the main power line, this power line here cuts it off.
Would you be coming in this direction?
Right, but you can't get into the parcel, yeah. You can't cross this parcel without.
You know.
Because it's, that's the main utility line.
I'm just thinking, you get, you get an encouragement, and if somebody were to blow back here and develop.
Oh, yeah.
Now you're talking.
But they still gotta cross this to get to this basically.
That's a.
But I'm just saying, if residential is sitting here, we're talking now, we're getting closer than.
It could potentially get there, yeah. I mean, you get access, basically, over here, and access out there. Some of that land is a sub I know in here, so it makes it really tough to develop.
Right, right. As residential areas that could redevelop.
Right, right. Oh, yeah, that's the last large section, I mean, other than the stuff that's already dedicated for stuff that is available.
Judge Piper's decision's important, because he said it can be in a residential area.
Oh, yeah. No, 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 we understand that. No, he's just concerned about, at some point, they may build, but, you know, they'll be coming to the nuisance, so to speak.
You mean build, uh.
It's like after.
Build a residential, so did.
Yeah, well, the concern is, in, up in here, he could.
On the other.
Residential, on the other parcels, and getting too close. But I would think that anybody who wants to build would be very much aware that there's a solar farm there.
And they would have to get approval to do that, ain't it?
Yeah, yeah, but, I mean, it's an open and obvious thing, unless that people.
It could happen.
You know, I would assume they would keep a buffer, and they're required anyways by the regulations that are above them, for any residential, so much of a buffer.
What are the protections around this piece of this?
Are.
You said fence, but.
Well, that's around the array itself, and then there is a buffer around that, about the parcel.
There's an undisturbed tree buffer that they have to maintain as well.
You have to build a fence in so many feet from the.
So the fence is inside, around the array, and there's all sorts of warnings and signs and alarms. And then around the boundary, that, that's what the planning board's dealing with, is the screening, I think, is what they call it.
There has to be some screening from that.
But there's also, we're not clear-cutting right to the, right to the edges either.
The edges of the property.
No, so there's.
A buffer.
There's already a buffer there.
Buffer screen.
I mean, now, that lot was cleared, was wooded several times over the last hundred years. So it, it was vacant land. Now it grew up, it got wooded and.
It was timbered and then regrew and timbered again.
So.
Are there any other questions?
What about the issue that our jurisdiction, I mean, the East Long Meadow zoning board appeals ends at the state line?
The jurisdiction.
Our jurisdiction ends at the state line, where we can or can't consider anything in Connecticut. What's your position on that?
Well, your jurisdiction, you, you can't make a ruling about something in Connecticut, but as, as Mark said, you can require, uh, the developer to provide you with a written document that says that the fire and police are going to cooperate. I've given you an email from the police, fire department. We have a letter or a comment from the chief of the police. I'll get that. So, um, it's not a question of jurisdiction. Your jurisdiction does end at the state line. So, but you can make a determination that, of that lot that's in Massachusetts satisfies the requirements of frontage, because you have it in Connecticut that comes in. And so we waive. And so we waive, you're giving us a variance from the frontage requirement in East Long Meadow.
Correct.
What would happen if, for some reason, the frontage in Connecticut were to no longer exist?
Well, they can, they can only maintain that driveway if they can't access it.
I mean, that's why there's an easement, a cross-easement and a deed restriction, so it's always going to be owned together. You know, it's a practical consideration.
I just want to make sure there's permanent access.
No, I understand, I'm just speaking from a, from a safe people's idea. How can we require that something existed, to his point, that, where we have no jurisdiction?
What we're just saying is that that meets our frontage requirements with all these other, to meet the purposes of the frontage requirement.
And that's a municipality agreement, too.
Right, intermunicipality, which-
But there's no interstate compact on this lot. Is there an agreement between the two states?
No.
And that's the same thing, though, with fire. Like, we go to Shaker Pines, and Shaker Pines comes here.
All the time.
We have that.
I understood. That's been for years.
Right, and you now share 911 calls with, I mean, you have these agreements where you work with other towns, right?
They all work together.
We figure it out when we get there.
What's that?
We figure it out when we get there.
It happens every day.
It just depends on, like, getting along with those police departments, taking calls in chicken base, I hope it's one.
Shaker Pines is a good example, yeah.
That's all.
I mean, we've gone to both. I mean, they've had calls there, and we've gone there for support, vice versa. Just depends on the location, what the need is.
And there's a practical example right there.
That's right.
So, I mean, it's just, so as long as the municipality agrees, both fire chiefs and police chiefs are in agreement. I mean, that's, I think, in a way, it's a no-brainer, just having it written in the document.
Well, as you can see from the fire chief's email, he's met with the town of Summers.
He's already had that conversation.
And they agree, and we're going to provide the, what do they call it, Knox boxes and things like that, and the keys to both departments.
So, I guess, are any other questions? I just want to open anybody here to speak in favor. Hearing none. Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, folks. I'm Marilyn Richards, currently on the town council. When I got involved with this particular proposal, I was on the Planning Matters Subcommittee, which is a town council-appointed committee. And, you know, initially, as Attorney Martin referenced, the buyer, and we talk about buyer beware, the buyer knew that this parcel, at the time of purchase, was double-A residential zoned. I'm not even sure the issue of frontage was so important at that time, but I can't speak for the research that they did on frontage. However, the parcel was, for all intents and purposes, landlocked right now. You know, there are parcels around, yes, there are currently, some of them are currently owned by other utility companies. But there are, there's only one parcel away from Bella Vista Estates, you know, that development keeps moving inward. A lot of East Long Meadow was landlocked until we were developed, as our growth went to the outskirts of our community. I question the issue of hardship, because they purchased the land knowing it wasn't zoned for what they wanted to do with that land. They came to, and Attorney Martin was correct, they came to the council, went to the planning board, you know, back to the Planning Matters Subcommittee to review the issue of their request for, initially, industrial garden park. They asked for industrial garden park, because they felt that was a better zone, because industrial garden park was just across the street on Shaker Road on the other side. So they felt that really wasn't spot zoning or anything, it was relatively close to what we had. And, but then, Councilor Ralph raised the issue of frontage, and there's no frontage. So all of a sudden, it went from industrial garden park to the industrial zone. There were concerns, if we change the zone, which is what our current bylaw had allowed before we went to the courts, what happens when the solar farm goes away? This is double-A residential zoned. What happens, I'm asking you this, if you allow for no frontage at all, which I think is unheard of in, you know, our zoning, regardless of what the proposed use is, because that use will go away? You know, what's, where do you go with this, if you say no frontage? What does that do to this piece of land, when it's no longer a solar farm, and they want to put a single-family house on this lot? Is the frontage in Connecticut going to be sufficient? It's still East Long Meadow land, it's still-
Well, the road would have to meet the requirements of the subdivision for a single-family lot there. I mean, if you're going to build the house in, way in Massachusetts, and not in the Connecticut portion, what do you, what do you do if the house straddles the line?
You're the lawyer.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, you got, they would allow a driveway.
I mean, my understanding is, once you waive the frontage on this lot, it's gone forever.
We're not waiving the frontage. We're saying the frontage in the town is already there, and they're going to use that frontage to access the lot.
But the frontage isn't in, isn't in East Long Meadow.
I understand, but there are a lot of things that are allowed with rights away. Except you have to make that right away, bring up the town standards. That's, and that's what we have under the subdivision control. This whole purpose of the subdivision control law is, I have a right of way to get there. But you can't build a house or do certain improvements until that road meets certain standards that our town feels are important for the safety, not only of the general public, but for the people that are going to be living in those homes. That we have to have the services, so the town doesn't get stuck with having to bring the road into, because this is what's happened in the past, without the subdivision control law. The developer sells it, and the people got a bunch of houses back there, and I'm paying taxes, and I come back to the town and say, "Oh, this road is absolutely horrendous. I can't get to my house, it's not safe," da-da-da-da, and they come back, and they force the town to do the improvements to the road. And that becomes the issue, and that's why we have a subdivision control law. But a lot of times, you have driveways, mansions, that sit up, and the guy has a 300-foot driveway. It could be developed into 20 lots, if he wanted to do it, but he didn't. That's not what he's proposing. He's proposing to put a solar array, and the judge, in terms of the zoning, says, hey, he may have known, but that's illegal.
But the judge, you know, as I understand-
I mean, Mr. Pill is looking to make case law, and that's what he wants to do.
At your expense, I hope you have a big budget, please.
And trust me, this isn't going away.
No, no, and I understand. The issue is, is the town want to be the guinea pig for this case that Mr. Pill wants to make history with. That's basically what he wants to do. And we're the ones that are going to pay, as the taxpayers, for that appeal. Whether we win it, I don't know. But he seems to want to make a wonderful test case, because he not only wants to challenge the frontage, he thinks the decision, that the thing that you can't, that Piper's decision was wrong.
Well, there are different courts that have made different decisions with similar arguments, so-
But the issue is, is the town want to, you know, be the guinea pig.
And maybe this is the one case where it's important to go that extra mile.
And I understand, and I understand, but, I mean, I don't see the problem in doing the variance. If we meet all of the requirements for the safety of the project, and it, you can get in. I don't know what the future's going to bring, but I know, at least for the next 18 years, you're going to have a solar farm there.
The other, the other comment-
And as long as we have, you know, bonds and things such that, you know, when it's no longer useful, that requires the stuff to be removed, and there's an adequate bond-
Well, there's a decommissioning program.
Well, that's what I'm saying. As long as that, that's not before this board, but as long as that's put in place by the town, that it's decommissioned, and it's guaranteed when it's no longer useful, or it's, you know, some other power source comes in that's different than what we have today.
My other comment is, there was discussion about buffers, and the buffers were waived by the planning board, if you recall correctly.
Right, unless there's a change of use.
Unless there's a change in use, and we have residential development being built next to. So even the planning board took the position that, right now, because the parcel's landlocked, yeah, you know, this is the situation, but solar will go away. We know it will go away at some point. May not in my lifetime, but it will go away, and I'm fighting for the future of our double-A residential zone, which is our pristine land in East Long Meadow. And I just feel that to agree to frontage in, not necessarily in another community, but in another state, for an operation in East Long Meadow is, is huge. That's really huge.
I'm saying, that's what variances are for. I think it's a unique situation, that's why they're before us today.
But you're basing it on the use. You're not basing it on the zone, you're basing it on the-
No, I'm basing it on, I'm basing it on the judge's decision, that we can't, we can't regulate that use by saying you can't use it in a double-A zone.
As I said, it's not over till it's old.
I understand, but I don't know that we will either.
And what's more, I mean, I would imagine that if we deny this, that that judge is going to immediately say, "Look, I already told you guys once, you can't tell these people no, based on your zoning bylaws," which the frontage requirement happens to be one, eh? Again, I'm not expressing a personal opinion as to, I try not to do that. I live right next to this thing, just so everybody knows. Okay, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to keep my personal feelings out of this, and look at this strictly from the way I think a zoning board ought to look at it. It's a judicial situation for us. We need to understand whether or not we can properly grant them relief under the bylaw. Not, and in connection with a judge's order, which complicates things. Because what the judge has effectively said is, your bylaws are moot, as it concerns this piece of land and this applicant, am I right?
Yeah, well, these-
Which is kind of unusual.
Our bylaw, you can't outlaw them in residential zones.
We went through this with the cellular antennas back in the, in the early 2000s in the condominiums, remember, Mark? The deal with that stuff, so it's the same thing. So it's, it's, I understand where you're coming from.
Thank you.
I really do, and, you know, I've got my own neighbors I'll probably have to face at some point, depending on how this goes. But we have to look at this, I think, as a matter of law, not as a matter of what's, what's good for the public, what's, whether this should be pristine land, should be, it's not up to the town to decide what land is pristine and what land is set aside. It's up to the people who own that land, frankly. I mean, we have to be sensitive to that as well. So, having said that, I still would like to understand exactly by what mechanism a variance can be granted in this instance, because I'm not familiar with how a variance works apart from topography, slums.
It's a shape, and it's based on the fact that our frontage is in a, not in East Long Meadow. That's the issue.
There's case law that says that shape, that a state line can create a hardship for a state. If you came in, and you own the two parcels, and the state line happens to be, and you didn't create those two parcels, and the state line was there, that in and of itself could be a hardship.
It can.
It can be viewed as a hardship.
Which is why I gave you the background, that this lot has been in this shape since 1905.
No, I remember you saying that.
Yeah, Mr. Page wanted to speak, to give a chance.
I just want it to be air tight.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Because there's a lot of people who feel, as she does, and they have every right to feel that way, and-
Thank you. Ralph Page, I currently live at 137 Pease Road, just recently moved in. And I am a member of the town council now. When I first started with this, as I spoke, I was on, as a citizen, Subcommittee. My question is this. Currently, what's in front of you is to reduce the frontage from 175 feet, which is required, to zero. That's the application in front of you. From what I'm hearing, is you're stating that it wouldn't be to zero, because you don't need to reduce the frontage, because from what you're saying is he has frontage.
Right.
So if that's the case, then this application in front of us is moot. You wouldn't, you wouldn't be reducing it to zero. You're already saying he has frontage, so it would be a denial.
The question is here, is, we're giving zero frontage in East Long Meadow, we're using the frontage in Summers to satisfy the requirement, if they meet all of these other requirements, to provide safe access to the site from Summers.
As an attorney,
Yes.
if I was to come forwards and say, "I would like to purchase just the parcel within East Long Meadow." It's deeded separately.
Boy, now you're just trying to subdivide it.
It, no, I'm not trying to subdivide it, because there's two, no, there's two separate deeds. There's a deed for the parcel in Massachusetts, there's a deed for the parcel in Connecticut. So if I was to purchase the land within East Long Meadow, which was offered to the town of East Long Meadow under First Rite of Refusal, 61A, we could have purchased just that property.
But you didn't?
We didn't. But by being able to purchase that, that means that parcel's landlocked. There was no frontage on that parcel. I do not believe Bilton Road, which is down here, can constitute frontage for a parcel that's in the state of Massachusetts, which I could, and the town could have bought separately. Knowing that we had no frontage, it makes no sense whatsoever to say, "Hey, that parcel over there, yeah, that's going to be the frontage for this one over here." It just-
Well, it's a part, it's, I think the whole issue is, you have to have two different deeds, because you're in two different states. You got to record, it's just like I have a land court and a non-land court, you're going to have two deeds, because one gets recorded in land court, same thing, but it's all one parcel, it's taxed as one. You've got two different towns taxing it.
Two different taxes.
I understand, but you have, you have two different jurisdictions.
When it was purchased.
Well, I'm not so sure that's okay.
That's what you, I'm just trying to-
They had allocated it.
So you're suggesting that this-
This is a landlocked parcel with no frontage, neither in the state of Connecticut or in the state of Massachusetts. The only way to get to this frontage is over an adjoining parcel, which the applicant owns. I understand that. I understand that he can drive over his parcel. Biltons did it. My father worked there for years. It was under 61A, because it was an apple orchard. It was assumed that it would never be built on. These parcels down here are 61A, which are on Pease Road. It was agricultural land. Now, all of a sudden, because of solar, they want to say, "Hey, this landlocked parcel that's up here, yeah, I'm going to drive over my other parcel that I own, which is deeded separately in a different state, to get to this road." I just-
Yeah, but I'm not so sure they were two different separate transactions, because they, they happened at the same time. They had to allocate the price, because you got to pay a tax in Connecticut, and you have to pay a tax in Massachusetts, based on the consideration that you're buying the property. So you have to set, you have to have two different deeds, because you got to record one and pay a tax in Connecticut, because you don't want to pay double tax, paying for the, say, "I'm buying this property for half a million dollars," okay? But part of it's in East Long Meadow, part of it's in Connecticut. If I have to pay 500,000 in taxes, for conveyance taxes and transfer taxes in Connecticut, and then pay a stamp tax on that same consideration, I'm paying twice.
And East Long Meadow would have purchased that, and they set a price on it, so-
Well, they allocated it like they did on the deed, but it was one transaction.
But what does the, what does East Long Meadow's thinking of purchasing this land have to do with-
Well, there was a right of refusal when it was-
We would not have been buying land in Connecticut.
That's right.
So it's, it's two separate deeds.
But it has to be.
You're right, it has to be, which means that you cannot consider frontage on Bilton Road as frontage on that parcel.
He's arguing because it's two separate deeds.
I just said, close out a house, if part of it was in Wilbraham, part of it was in Springfield, it was in two different towns. But it's, you know, they're going to, they are going to get a tax bill from East Wilbraham and Springfield. But this was listed as one parcel of land, it was purchased as one parcel of land, but the mechanics required the allocation.
Same owner, most likely. It's the same owner, same transaction. They had to do it in two deeds, because you're in two different states.
That's like saying that, if I come to your house and I buy your house and your neighbor's, that it's one transaction.
I've had that, I've had that with land court and non-land court, I have to do two deeds.
We have it right here in town, Ralph. Guys are living on the Summers line, and paid some the Summers and paid some the East Long Meadow. It's the exact same thing.
And their parcel is divided up?
Are they landlocked?
No, they're not landlocked, but what they're missing, you're saying that that parcel could be landlocked.
I'm saying that this is the frontage.
If they're driveway to East Long Meadow, they don't drive through Summers to get into it, they drive to East Long Meadow.
For this lot. Correct. That's not frontage for that lot.
That's the hardship in this particular case.
Well, you just said that they have frontage on Bilton Road.
That's right. That's the hardship in this particular case of the unique circumstance.
Well, is this question and answer, is this argument?
Well, my question was simple.
He answered it.
How can you determine frontage on Bilton Road, when it doesn't touch the lot?
It does. It's all contiguous land, owned by the same owner in the same transaction. I mean, you can have land court, non-land court, and you have to record it in two different districts. You have two different deeds, because you have to have it in, record it in two different places. I mean, it's unfortunate you're in, it's a unique situation, because you're in Massachusetts and Connecticut. I mean, I'd hate, I'd hate it if we were right on the cusp of Rhode Island, Massachusetts and Connecticut, because you'd have three deeds.
So if that's the case, then he can build a house right there, in the middle of East Long Meadow, and doesn't have to do with his deeds.
Well, he still has to, it would come back based on the use, because we're approving this driveway for this particular use and this particular thing, so that you start changing the use, you may have different requirements. You've got people living there, there's a difference. You don't have people living here. It's a passive use. You may have a fire back there, you may have somebody have a heart attack, but you don't have people have to get back and forth to that thing on a daily- but you don't have people have to get back and forth to that thing on a daily basis for, for a safety point of view, and they're using it as frequently as you would.
So...
So this, this particular thing is, is, the access that we're asking for is tailored to this particular use, to make sure that this use always has access for that and that that use might, that road may have to be upgraded substantially if you want to put a residence in there. That would be up to the fire department, the police and the...
Can your vote tonight be contingent on this huge only, if the use goes away, the frontage requirement or the...
Well, the frontage is, it's, it's, the access road is tailored for this specific use. This may be a driveway, we may not wanna have a residence without a 40 or 50-foot road. That may be a difference. That's up to the planning board.
What you wanna make sure of is that if this, when this use is discontinued and a new use is brought, that, that, that they've gotta come back.
See, that was the whole issue with the zone change.
You don't have to the planning.
They have to go back anyway.
Yes, it's already, they would have to give in for a site plan review right away. For any other use.
So it's still set in zone, uh, residential, double A. Still set in residential A. I mean, you gotta play it for other uses.
Right.
Right, right, now it is, but no frontage. You know, you've waived it.
We haven't waived it. We've, we've found a hardship for this particular use.
But if it goes back to a purchase...
We haven't waived it. It's, we're saying the frontage in Bilton meets the requirement. Because it's residential.
So the fact that they bought it knowing that the situation was, that doesn't feed into the hardship at all?
Well, you gotta remember that the, the judge ruled because of the use. So that if there's any other use that's gonna take place on this property, you don't have that, that, isn't it a state, it's a, it's a U.S. statute, right?
No, it's a state statute.
State statutes that you can't unreasonably restrict solar developments.
In the residential zone.
In a residential zone.
This particular judge, and then there was another judge. I'm just saying that we know that there are other opinions out there that are directly opposite...
But we got this one.
Well, but we may have another one.
Well, that's if we wanna pay for the appeal.
Well...
And then that appeal, that, that appeal may go to the appeals court and then up to the SJC.
Is your case.
And is the town prepared to spend the money to do that.
It's your land, it's your property, it's your bylaw.
I understand, but I just, I'm very familiar with Mr. Pill. I mean, and he loves making a name for himself and...
Please don't, please don't be disrespectful to...
No, no, I'm saying, he's, he's, he's a very good lawyer, but he has a 100% of his cases before the SJC.
Well, I don't think any attorney has.
And I understand, I'm just saying, but do we wanna bring that issue? Because that's what's gonna end up happening, if that's what's gonna happen, if the town wants to spend that type of money going through the appeals court into the SJC, because that's where it's gonna head.
So through the chair, one other question. Um, I know Mr. Martin said that he is connecting into the power line, and from what I understand, he has to come all the way down to Shaker Road where they're going to build a facility, an interconnection facility. Am I, I believe I'm correct in that?
I don't know that for sure, Ralph.
That's what was put in front of the planning board.
Mr. Royer, Mr. Royer's presented that to the board several times.
Which means that they will be using that access. Obviously, they'll have to, the wiring will have to go from here to there, which would give them access into the property from...
Potentially. Right now, they don't have it.
The only way that they can hook up to that money.
I mean, if they, if they got an easement from the holder of that easement, National Grid or whoever holds ease of Mass Electric, I don't know who owns that easement. If they got an easement from Mass Electric to use their easement, they would have access to that parcel.
But they won't give it to them.
Well, that's the issue. I mean, we don't know that.
Oh, we do know that.
Right now, they won't, but we don't know what the future will bring. Yeah?
John Torsho, 79 Topkins Ave. I sit on the planning board. Um, so I think this was probably, this discussion, these questions was probably the exact reason why we felt as board that this issue should go before the ZBA. Uh, just a little bit of comment on the process in terms of getting that information, Attorney Pill's information. I had a discussion with our chair, Russ Denver, about five days before, and he made a point. He wanted to deliver this and make sure Attorney Martin has this information ahead of time. Unfortunately, that didn't happen, and I'm very upset that that didn't happen because I'm not, I, I don't wanna be somebody, I can't speak for other board members, but I, I would never allow something like that to happen. So unfortunately, that was sort of a miscommunication. Uh, I felt that our process in discussing this specific case was very fair. Would I have liked to have seen comments come a little bit quicker? Yes, but unfortunately, as a board, we can't control that. Uh, but in terms of just speaking to the process, it was a very fair process and to say otherwise, I would contest that.
Well, I don't know that any of this is even really relevant.
Yeah, no, no, no.
No, it was, it was not, I mean, it's different from, I just, it was discussed.
Don't misunderstand me. I'm just saying that I think we need to consider the evidence that's presented and our own deliberations and the public's comments, whether they're for it or against it, and that's what we have.
The question is really about, I'm sorry, the question's really about frontage, really. That's pretty much the issue you guys are talking about. I was just adding some brief...
Yeah, I understand. And it's, you know, that hasn't been decided yet, but that's my personal feeling is that your frontage is in another town and can that frontage just, is part of the hardship be? And I think as long as that frontage serves a frontage, the same functions as frontage you would have on a lot in East Long Meadow or right away that provides safe access for the particular use that we're going to do, I think that's the whole purpose of the frontage. If you're gonna put another type of use back there with a different types of things, your road may have to, you may have, may have the utilities, different utilities that have to get back there to service the people, that's a whole different situation in turn, because when you're doing other things, you may need to have electric, gas, streetlights, et cetera, et cetera. That's not required in this particular case. This is, this is for this particular use and this particular use only. When that ceases, that driveway may not meet the requirements to put a single-family home or two homes back there or three homes, whatever they wanna, whatever they wanna do.
But what they will have is the precedent that the ZBA did rule that in that particular case, the frontage requirement was okay because it was in another state.
Correct. But they still would have to make sure that the access road meets the requirements.
I'm John Pearson, 318 Pease Road on the other. I'm wondering, did I hear that the buffer or screen requirement was being waived for this project? I'm wondering why the last time I was up there, there's still a wooded area there. And I'm wondering why that would be waived.
Well, there's a member of the planning board here, so he can speak for the planning board, but my recollection is that there is plenty of buffer still around because we're not clearing the entire parcel. But if the use were to change such that it was no longer gonna be a solar farm with the woods around it, then we would, the waiver was granted in this case only in terms of, is that your understanding?
Yeah, and the variance here would be granted for this project and the plans as presented here tonight and presented to the, the planning board in terms of what's there so that we don't, you know, all of a sudden approve this and all of a sudden the buffer zone, even though they waived the requirement, but the existing one shows a buffer zone. Uh, they waived it, they don't, they're not requiring it, but he has it in this plan if we're gonna approve anything.
They waived it based on...
But with the condition, with the condition as well.
So we've got a plan that shows a buffer, a natural buffer being maintained. So it must be maintained. So they have a buffer. They have to maintain the natural buffer that's there, and if that buffer were to disappear because of a change of use, which would bring them back here anyway. So I'm, personally, I'm satisfied with that particular aspect of it because they're all, they're not clearing the whole site.
I just don't quite like the term waived.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It would be a requirement here if we were gonna vote, and I, I can't tell you whether the other members are gonna vote, but it would be a requirement if I were gonna vote for it.
I had the same reaction when I saw that.
It's gonna be built according to the plans that have been submitted so that we don't end up getting a bait and switch.
Yeah, and I really haven't seen much, I haven't seen any of the solar farm plans, so I just don't know what...
I could, I can send you some if you'd like.
Well, half of it's built. If you drive up Bilton Road, you take a look, it's up, it's up and, I don't know if it's running.
That's, that's in Summers.
That's in Summers.
This is, this is really a plot plan of the...
The area, it doesn't show the actual...
Profile or anything.
But I think the planning board probably has that.
Look at what's up, you can see what you're gonna get. That's what it's gonna look like.
And the waivers are granted, because that's what the bylaw says. You ask for a waiver on certain things.
I, I get that, I get that.
I'd be happy to get you any information you want, sir.
Okay.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Do you have any rebuttal or are you satisfied?
I think I'm satisfied.
Okay. Um, do we have any motion to continue the public hearing, close the public hearing? I'll entertain a motion.
I think I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll have a discussion. If I were gonna grant this, I would want certain conditions on the grant.
I need three things.
Yeah.
I need the, the intermunicipality agreement.
The library's closing in just a few minutes.
What?
The library's closing in less than 10 minutes.
Well, we may have to push back our hearing. I don't know, or, I mean, I, I wanna keep this open meeting.
We have, we have the planning board tomorrow night.
Yeah, no, no, I understand, so...
Do we have to shut the meeting down because the library's closing?
Well, I mean, that comes, that's... I'd like to try to get it tonight, but I think I want more than 10 minutes to discuss it. But go ahead.
Yeah, so, so three things that I think that, that I'd need to see is the intercompany, intermunicipality agreement, a similar memo from the chief of police that we have from the fire department. And I'd like to see the, I think you said you had a drafted deed restriction.
We do.
I'd like to...
I'd like to see the copy of the lease that ultimately is between the parties, and I'd prefer to see an easement than the restriction.
We don't have the lease yet, Mark, but we...
But if there's going to be one, I assume I want it to be done.
Right, so, uh, those are things that we, that we're gonna be, I think, in the planning board's conditions with respect to the deed restriction.
But they're not there, that's, I just want to make sure.
Well, that's because we're tomorrow night.
Otherwise, we're gonna have to go with the restriction.
So, and I know, not only has Mr. Pill taken over litigation, but then they've changed council that was handling the deed restriction, so, I mean, I can't get that to you by tomorrow. I have to...
Yeah, but it would be conditioned on a deed restriction, et cetera.
Deed restriction or...
Or an easement.
Whatever, whatever the town agrees to.
Right.
My client has indicated they would do either.
Yeah, I would prefer an easement if possible, but we would need a lease to do that.
Okay.
Because that's permanent, at least through the, the length of the term of your lease, whenever that is, I would want for the length of that. I'm concerned about a restriction because if you have a 50- or 70-year lease and you have a restriction, they're only good for 30 years, and you can only bring them forward 20. And so I don't wanna have a restriction that expires and we're, we're stuck for the last 20 years.
I think I'm comfortable saying that whatever town council negoti, you know, preferences will, prefers, I should say, will...
The other thing I do wanna make sure is the sighting commission's okay with the extension of that road into Mass, you know, because the way it ended, it ended in Connecticut, and there's a small area between the end of that road, as shown on those plans, and the Mass line. I wanna make sure the sighting commission in Connecticut has approved that extension into Massachusetts.
If they have it.
Yeah, there's a small, there's a small section that it's got, I don't know what the distance is there, but it's, it's, it's not a large distance, but it shows on your plan, but I'm not sure, that went before the sighting commission, that's all that 60-foot drive.
If they have it, we'll make sure we get it.
And then it's gonna, you know, it's gonna be conditioned on the plans that have been submitted to the town, you know, that are, that are...
Well, we have to get site design review from the planning board.
Right, I understand. That are submitted and that'll be built according to those plans, it'll be, you know, a whole new proposal in place, that's all. Those would be conditions that we're gonna do. Does anybody else have any conditions? And, you know, I assume the plans for the road, do we have, the planning board have the, the...
Yes.
Plans as to how deep and wide, we got the width, but I don't know, you know, the construction, the specs of the road?
Yes. You, you have that, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And then they would be conditioned only to this specific use?
Right, to this particular use, that's what this is for. It's not allowed as, you know, for another particular use. It could be used as a driveway, but that doesn't mean that use is gonna be an approved use because it has that driveway.
So in other words, when this use is discontinued, however that's defined...
Be reset to zero.
Then this property reverts to its present status.
Correct.
You start all over again.
Right, basically.
But the reason the town has required this either deed restriction or easement is that they'll always be together.
Right.
So whoever, if this use ends, subsequent use will have the advantage of that building.
I just want it for whatever the length of your agreement between, as long as the solar, if you're gonna have the, an operator of the solar and, and the owner, as long as they're solar operating there, the, the ownership remains the same on both pieces, that's all. If that ends, then, you know, I don't want the, you know, the, somebody trying to run a solar operation out of there after, after the fact, they'd have to come back to the board for another solar operation, if that's what they're gonna do. I mean, because one of the issues I've always is concerned is these areas that are built now, the panels that are gonna get, you're gonna have in 10 or 20 years, probably 10 times the amount of energy or 20 or 30 times the amount of energy produced on acres because the solar panels will be smaller, more efficient, and you won't need the acreage to produce the megawatts that you're gonna have, you'll be producing potentially a lot more megawatts. You'll have to go back to the state, I assume, the sighting board to be able to get approved for a larger, uh, project.
More megawatts?
Yeah, but they may, they may choose to lessen the size of their sight, because they don't need it, they don't need that much area of land, because that's what I think is gonna be...
That's why there's the decommissioning clause in the planning...
Yeah, well, that's why I wanna have a, with the planning board to make sure...
John can verify that.
So, any other discussions? Do we have a motion by anybody to approve, disapprove? Charles, you wanna try to put...
Never made a motion with so many different...
Well, you can adopt the conditions we have.
Yeah, so I guess I move to approve the variance request based upon the, the conditions that we enumerated, being satisfied.
Yeah, and I think we also would wanna have a finding that the hardship is the shape in the fact that your frontage is in a town, in a different state, in a different town, though there is adequate frontage under our zoning ordinance, with the proviso that you have this driveway, the inter-Pease will agree it to meet the requirements of, of access, so... But I would wanna have that. Does anybody second that motion?
I second.
We'll do a, a roll vote? We'll start down here. Who's the alternate? James, you're the alternate, okay, we'll start with you, Dan?
No.
No? Yes?
Yes.
Yes? So it's four to one, variance passes. There's a 20-day appeal period, once it gets filed with the town clerk. If anybody wants to file an appeal, they're free to do so.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your time and attention. Appreciate it.
Good luck. Good luck.
Thank you.
But these are the exhibits for...
Someone handed me this. Is this yours, Ralph? It's got an original stamp on it.
We may have to continue. I feel...
Connie, did you give me this?
If they can...
I had one.
Well, that's what we're going to have to do, and I apologize.
This could be mine. No, this is mine, actually, because I filed this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think we're going to be very long here on this one, and I just want to check with the town to see if they give us another five minutes. I don't know if the, you know, because I don't think it'll be this far.
Well, the library, whether, you know, if someone's willing to wait another 10, 15 minutes, because I don't think this one's going to be very controversial.
No.
Cameron, how you doing?
I know you guys ran out of time for us, but we're just taking approval. We'll leave. How's that making sense? I like that, that's cheaper.
The door's locked so that if we leave, these, it's not open to the, I just don't want to leave the place wide open.
No, they're, they're push lock, so basically, they're...
Once we leave, it's there.
Pushing, pushing.
Let me just talk to the...
Just sit down a minute here for a second, get this organized.
So this is a solar farm that's going at the 83rd Bilton Road, you guys were talking about? So do you guys have any input on the new college coming on 186, since I live in Southbrook?
It's in a different state.
I know it's a different state, but they have...
We're watching out if they show up looking for approval for a right-of-way...
But isn't there a traffic study coming through the town?
Are they joining problems?
Shouldn't there be a traffic study for the town itself?
I just don't think it's a...
I'm not against them, I'm just saying.
Well, some of it's not happening with solar fields. If you look at what's going on, I don't know much about the 190, but they apparently don't like college. So they like, they want the sunlight, but they don't want the intelligence.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I have a report to do, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have to...
That's actually a cute way to get...
Yeah.
First, first time I've ever...
Yeah.
No, I know what you're doing. I know exactly.
We'll, we'll start, open the public hearing on the second petition for the variance under the signed ordinance with a setback requirement for the property at 642 North Main Street. The clerk will read the record.
East Long Meadow zoning board of appeals will be, will hold a public hearing, uh, hearing on March 9th at 6:30 in the topic library conference room in 60 Center Square. 4K ZB 2020-02, a request by applicant for variance, 5.83, business district two, ground signs, a setback requirement from 25 feet to 10 feet for the installation of a ground sign located at 604 North Main Street. In the business zoning district, applicant representative Philip Verdic, architect, Ridgeway Terrace in Springfield. Information regarding the application is being ruled for inspection by the planning, at the planning and development office. It's town hall, 60 Center Square. This is posted February 20 and February 27, 2020.
Okay. So just the rules of the road. Whoever the petitioner, we'll give them a chance to speak. Give their petition, just give your name and address, explain why you believe there's a hardship related to the shape or topography of the buildings, et cetera, and the meeting the public purpose of, of the variance and the intent of the bylaws and not derogating from the public purpose. And then we'll give anybody in opposition the opportunity to speak, and then you'll get a chance to rebut them. So is there any representative from the...
Yes.
Yeah, please state your name.
For the record, my name is Philip Verdic, registered architect and registered landscape architect in Massachusetts. I reside at 5 Ridgeway Terrace in Springfield, Massachusetts. I represent the client as appropriate architect for the building and, uh, landscape architect. The project is under, is a project under construction approved by the planning board in previous meetings. The reason for the hardship is that the building is at the setback line now, both for the side yard and the front yard, so there is no remaining setback space within the, within that, within the, within that site in order to get the building area that's allowed and the parking that's required. So that has to do with the configuration of the lot. The hardship is that there are other businesses with signs there. If we only had signs on the flat part of the building, it would probably not be that visible. Since it's a new business that, or a business that's moving from another town to this town, it's important to be at the location is, is known by people who are looking for the building. And as far as whether or not there's a negative impact on the neighbors, so, like, you have some other, if you're interested, I do have, there are other signs that are noncompliant on that same area, because, you know, that area is probably...
Yeah, we're familiar somewhat with that area, because we just had a hearing with the old Pasquale's. That's already too close, and a number of other signs are too close based on it, but they've been granting variances.
The other petitioner, the owner of the business is here, as well as another representative, and if there's any questions, please feel free to ask.
Any questions on the board?
No.
It's pretty cut and dry.
Sounds like a...
Only a basic question. The two circles, are those trees?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, the planning board, they just, make sure the branches are high enough.
Yes, so we can see, taking a left.
Not an LED blinking sign, is it?
No, no.
But it just tied to temperatures.
We're renting space on the sun.
Yeah. I'd make a motion if you want one.
Yeah, that's fine.
To, to approve the petition as...
Anybody speak against?
Anybody here to speak? And I don't see anybody, but...
But just a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Is the frontage the same on both roads, North Main Street and Brayburn?
The setback requirement aside yard is 5 feet. The setback requirement for the, for North Main Street is 25 feet.
If I understand our bylaws correctly, though, the frontage exists on both roads, so it would have been 25 feet on both roads. The frontage, the frontage is from...
Right, it's a corner lot.
It's a corner lot.
It's a corner lot.
Looking at this, looking at this.
So he's got two side yard setbacks, right?
So this is beyond the, it's in front, it's in front of...
It's in front of that, it was, it was a daycare before.
That was a pre-existing building.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. No, no, no.
This isn't the building that was torn down across from...
No, this was torn down, it's a new, new...
Yeah, so it's new construction. And one of the reasons, once they tore it down, was they had to meet all the proper setbacks.
Right.
But from the looks of it, it looks like the sign's down away from Brayburn a little bit, like almost in front of the building.
It is.
I, I, I got new glasses, I still can't read the...
It says 16...
16 feet, right?
Right there. Is that the street line?
Correct. It's, it's a...
From the property line.
8 feet from the corner of the building, and then it's a 5 feet, so it's like, yeah.